Welcome to Castle Meeting to Order with us this evening. We have scouts from Troop 348, they get it right, all the way from Buck Creek. And I'd like for them to come forward and read us in the pledge, please.
Come on up front, dog.
Come right up there. Be proud. There you go. Come on. You come on. There you go. No one ever lost on that call. That's good.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Well done. Would the clerk please conduct a roll call.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downey.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Orin Press.
Thank you. First up on the agenda is the approval of the March minutes. Mr. Campbell.
I move those minutes to be approved.
Mrs. Williamson.
Second.
They're moved and seconded for the approval of the minutes. Are there any questions or comments on the March minutes from members of council? Okay, all those in favor of the approval of the minutes, aye. Opposed? Thank you, the minutes are approved. Presentation of disposable claim.
Here and on.
Reports of city office is on file, oh, yes, dispatches, communications, sorry. Reports of city office is on file at the clerk's office.
Clerk's office, monthly February, police department, monthly February, water works department, monthly February, water pollution control department, monthly February, fire department, and a report 2014.
Thank you, those are on file at the clerk's office and may be viewed by the public during regular business hours. We have one ordinance for second reading this evening, ordinance 2015-03.
An ordinance amending chapter 1.02 of the Lafayette Municipal Code pertaining to the ordinance violation bureau.
And Mr. Chosnick, or excuse me, Mr. Brown.
President, I move that we hear and approve ordinance 2015-03 on second reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Williamson.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to hear ordinance 2015-03. Mr. Chosnick, would you please just briefly remind us of the ordinance.
This merely adds a parking operations supervisor and the parking enforcement technicians that work with them to issue ordinance violation bureau tickets as we have taken over the parking operations for the past several months.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council? Any comments or questions from members of the public regarding ordinance 2015-03? Okay, seeing none with the clerk, please conduct a vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downey.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. The first ordinance was for first reading this evening, the first one being ordinance 2015-07.
An ordinance amending zoning ordinance of Tepiqanoo County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from I-3 to GB, 580 North 36th Street, Metalworth Holdings LLC petitioner.
Mr. Clinker.
I move to hear ordinance 2015-07 on first reading.
And Mr. Heidi.
Aye.
Thank you. They're moved and seconded to hear ordinance 2015-07. Mr. Teeter.
Very much, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Dan Teeter, Attorney for Ryan Peter and Schreier, represent the petitioner on this. As you're aware, we're trying to rezone this to general business. We received a favorable staff report, unanimous yes vote from the area plan commission as well on this matter. We also recently rezoned the northeast corner of South and 36th Street to general business. This council approved that. Directly west of that is the veterinary clinic, it's also zone GB. Just north of that, we have the movie complex, it's zone GB. Our site just sits marked with the movie complex on 36th Street. You go further down 36th Street on both sides are two very large rectangular buildings, I'll call them office strip centers. They are zoned industrial, there's probably 10 or 15 offices in each building on each side of the street. They're being used as general business. Our site has three tenants in it, two offices, the third one is a private health club, it has a basketball court in it and a workout room. When we were remodeling that, the city came to inspect and indicated the zoning wasn't correct, so we immediately filed petition with area plan commission for this rezoning. We also spoke with the mayor on this project, we spoke with Councilman Downey, I believe they both support us. We would respectfully request your approval. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter. Any comments or questions from council for Mr. Teeter? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from members of the public regarding ordinance 2015-07? Okay, seeing none with the clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downey.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next ordinance for first reading is ordinance 2015-08.
An ordinance amending zoning ordinance of Tepiqanoo County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from R-1 and R-1B to R-2, 920 State Street, Robert and Ellen Hahn, petitioners.
It's a pleasure of the council, Mr. Reynolds.
I'd like to hear an approval of this 2015-08.
Thank you, Mrs. Nargie.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to hear ordinance 2015-08. And Mr. Teeter.
Again, for the record, Dan Teeter representing petitioner, Bob and Ellie Hahn are both present this evening, they'd be happy to respond to any questions that you might have. We're requesting a rezoning to R-2 on this matter. Again, we received a favorable staff report, unanimous yes vote from area plan. To me, this property is known as Potter Mansion, I think we all remember that and probably use that term. It's now called the Hahn Mansion Museum of Indiana Art. And this serves as the Connecticut State Pavilion at the Louisiana Purchase Exposition in St. Louis in 1904. Just for the record, I think it's interesting to note that it cost $45,000 to build it at that time, so things have changed.
Yeah, slightly.
The Potters purchased it, disassembled it, moved it to the State Street site in 1905, and then in 1984, the Hans purchased the property. They've had a labor of love for the last 30 years renovating it and brought it to the condition it's in, and are still working on it for the future as well. It's now on the National Register, it's part of the 9th Street Hill Historic District, and it's the home to one of the finest complete collection of Indiana artwork ever assembled. So, something that if you haven't seen, you probably ought to go up and take a look at it. They want the property to survive for future generations, and in order to do that, we've asked for this rezoning request. R-2 allows a museum, and that use allows other things as well. So, as a result, we've also filed a commitment, it be followed with area plan went through that process, that it can only be used as a museum and no other purpose, and that there could be only one resident on it. At this time, the resident is the Hans. As the museum grows and goes down in the future, there probably would be a caretaker in there instead of him. So, that commitment can never be moved or removed unless we go back through this process again with a public hearing. So, I think that gives assurances to the neighbors, and I think to the council as well, that it will remain as a museum. We meet all the green space setback and lot coverage requirements. The Hans have established a 501(c)(3) for this, they have a board of directors, they're going to have volunteers to do the tours and the special events. Probably most important is that they've established an endowment with the Greater Lafayette Foundation, which is very important. As this endowment grows, then at that point in time, they're planning on donating the real estate and the contents to the museum. And then at a later date, they're planning on turning the museum over and removing themselves from it, so it'll operate as a full-time museum at that point. I think it's a great opportunity for Greater Lafayette to be able to have something like this, and again, we would ask for your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter. Questions or comments from council for Mr. Teeter? Mrs. Nargie.
I live on 9th Street Hill, and I've talked to many of the neighbors, and everything's been positive. And, you know, most of the neighbors I've talked to felt that it was a really good thing for the neighborhood, particularly with the commitment and with one person living there. So, everybody in the neighborhood says yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Nargie.
I ask Mr. Teeter to go over this idea of a commitment. Who will determine that the commitment has been broken, and then what would the next step be, a public hearing?
Well, in order to do the commitment, we have to go through area plan with the public meeting. We also have to give notice to the city, and we've done that through the administrative officer, engineer's office. So, if there was a violation, either the neighbor would bring that up, the city would bring that up, the area plan would bring that up, and you have to go back before the area plan commission to determine that you failed to meet the requirements of the commitment. And at that point, there could be a fine or whatever. But in order to change the commitment, if you wanted to put duplexes in there, which are generally allowed in R-2, you could not do that unless you went back through area plan and then came back through this council.
Does that mean that the elected body would be eliminated from this consideration? You mentioned the area plan commission.
No.
You mentioned the city engineer.
It goes back through the same process again. If we wanted to change the commitment, say, put duplexes in there, we have to go back through the same process that we did with this. Thank you.
Thank you. And the commitment stays with the house, no matter who owns it?
The commitment runs with the land.
With the land, okay, right, okay.
It'll be removed unless we come back through the process, which is vitally important to it.
Any further questions from council? Okay, comments from the public regarding ordinance 2015-08? Okay, seeing none with the clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downey.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next up for first reading is ordinance 2015-09.
An ordinance amending zoning ordinance of Tepiqanoo County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from R-2 to GB, 3017 Green Bush Street, Green Bush LLC petitioner.
Mr. Campbell.
I move for passage of ordinance 2015-09 on first and final reading.
Mr. Brown.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to hear ordinance 2015-09. Mr. Teeter.
Again, for the record, Dan Teeter, this was the last time we've seen you. I'll watch the game in peace. Represent the petitioner, we request a rezoning to GB for this site. It's owned by the Lambert family. We received a favorable staff recommendation, again, unanimous yes vote from area plan commission as well on this. Petitioner owns this property as well as the strip center on the corner of Green Bush and 52. We went through a condemnation process with the city, had a resolution to it, and I think both sides were hopefully pleased with that, Mr. Chosnick and I worked on that. But as a result of that, we lost almost all the parking on the strip center. So, we're trying to get the property that we own directly to the west of it, and then take rezone, and then take part of that and add it to the strip center, so that we can get the required parking that we need, make the strip center usable again. And Mr. Chosnick and I, I think, agree that that was a good result, a good idea to promote as well. So, this property is bordered by Green Bush, the strip center is by Green Bush and by 52 as well. On the south side, we have the cemetery. To the west, there's an older rental, and then just west of that is the doctor's office. So, I think it's an appropriate zoning for this site, and again, we would ask for your approval. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Teeter.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from members of the public regarding ordinance 2015-09? Okay, seeing none with the clerk, please conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2015-09.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downey.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next up for first reading is ordinance 2015-09.
An ordinance amending zoning ordinance of Tepiqanoo County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from R-2 to GB, 3017 Green Bush Street, Green Bush LLC petitioner.
Mr. Campbell.
I move for passage of ordinance 2015-09 on first and final reading.
Mr. Brown.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to hear ordinance 2015-09. Mr. Teeter.
Again, for the record, Dan Teeter, this was the last time we've seen you. I'll watch the game in peace. Represent the petitioner, we request a rezoning to GB for this site. It's owned by the Lambert family. We received a favorable staff recommendation, again, unanimous yes vote from area plan commission as well on this. Petitioner owns this property as well as the strip center on the corner of Green Bush and 52. We went through a condemnation process with the city, had a resolution to it, and I think both sides were hopefully pleased with that, Mr. Chosnick and I worked on that. But as a result of that, we lost almost all the parking on the strip center. So, we're trying to get the property that we own directly to the west of it, and then take rezone, and then take part of that and add it to the strip center, so that we can get the required parking that we need, make the strip center usable again. And Mr. Chosnick and I, I think, agree that that was a good result, a good idea to promote as well. So, this property is bordered by Green Bush, the strip center is by Green Bush and by 52 as well. On the south side, we have the cemetery. To the west, there's an older rental, and then just west of that is the doctor's office. So, I think it's an appropriate zoning for this site, and again, we would ask for your approval. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Teeter.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from members of the public regarding ordinance 2015-09? Okay, seeing none with the clerk, please conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2015-09.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downey.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2015-10.
An ordinance to amend ordinance 2014-23, an ordinance fixing the salaries of the appointed officers and employees of the City of Lafayette, Indiana for the year 2015, excluding the sworn protective occupation and law enforcement numbers of the police and fire departments.
Thank you. Mr. Downey.
I move to hear and approve ordinance 2015-10.
Thank you, Mrs. Williamson. It's been moved and seconded to hear ordinance 2015-10. Would you like to speak to this, please? Thank you.
Good evening, Claudine Rothman, Parks Superintendent, and before you, we have a request to increase the classification of the zoo director position for the Parks Department. As you know, I held that position for quite some time, and with the vacancy, we're having tremendous difficulty filling that position. We've even opened it nationally. We've done market research to find out why we're having difficulty filling the position, aside from the candidate feedback of the pay is too low, and have found that in the Midwest and similar metropolitan-sized areas, that our pay is significantly lower than what it needs to be to be competitive. So, at this time, I wish to respectfully request that we reclassify that position at the next level up. Does anyone have any questions? Does the zoo need an accredited zookeeper? I assume there's some licensing involved, is there not? There's no licensing involved. We do prefer that the zoo director hold a bachelor's degree, but there is no official zoo director licensing or certification. Worst-case scenario, you do not get a person to fill this job. What's your alternatives going to be? Well, currently, we are about to close the position. It does look like we have some qualified candidates at this time. We would, at that time, continue on our course until we find the right candidate. We do not wish to settle for a candidate just to get someone to fill the position. We're lucky enough to have the second-in-command, Dana Rhodes, who is our assistant director, serving as interim director at this time. She has expressed that she does not wish to be zoo director. So, we would continue with our course until we find the right candidate. Will this bump be enough to attract good candidates? Well, we hope so. It's the next bump up in salary, and so the additional figure at the high end is about $5,000 difference, and that will put us into the range that we have found through our research, right below the $60,000 mark on the high end. So, we feel that that is putting us right where we need to be, to be competitive.
Further questions?
Thank you. Comments or questions from members of the public regarding ordinance 2015-10?
Seeing none with the clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downey.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 2015-11, let's meet.
An ordinance for appropriation of the local option highway user tax, county wheel tax fund number 249.
Mr. Clinker.
I move to hear and approve 2015-11, ordinance 2015-11.
Thank you, Mr. Heidi.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to hear ordinance 2015-11. Mr. Mayor.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you. This evening, I just want to make a brief comment on the passed ordinance, I didn't stand up at the time, but I think you're all aware of it, that we did bump up that classification, but as you noticed, we did not ask for any additional appropriation in money. We will live within our means, and we will save money in other areas to make that a bump possible. So, we'll be fiscally responsible and move the money necessary to make that position competitive, but we have not asked for additional appropriation of funds from this council. The ordinance before you now is the wheel tax money, as you recall, when the wheel tax was created in Tepiqanoo County, to address what many cities and counties across this nation face as infrastructure issues regarding their roads. We made a, I guess, pact together, that as opposed to appropriating those funds in the general budgetary process, where it would be more difficult to follow the use of those funds as they work with other local roads and street monies, that we would do an additional appropriation each year with a specific list of roads that would be presented to this council to review, and you would know exactly where those wheel tax dollars were going. So, this ordinance before you is a continuation of that government transparency, so this council and citizens can see where those funds are being expended, and we'd ask for your approval, and we'll try to pay as much as we can. We've got a lot to do, we'll see how the bids come in. If the bids come in well, and we have some money left over, we'll certainly let you know, and we'll go on to the next phase of pay. As you know, we do rate our roads, the engineer's office has a rating system, so we do have a list of roads and what should come up next. There's plenty on the list, so we'll have some to add if the bids come back good. Be happy to answer any questions.
Is it safe to assume that most of these streets are going to need ADA ramps? There are easements on and off the sidewalks.
Some of them, you know, we have been very aggressive over the last few years, putting in ADA-compliant ramps and additional ramps. We try to do so many of those each year with the road projects. We typically do some curbing and some ramps as we can with this money, but also with additional CDBG money. CDBG funds can actually be used for ramps, even if they're not in a CDBG designated area, because handicap accessibility is one of those exceptions that allow us to do that. So, we do as many of those we can. I'm not going to tell you we're going to get all of those done with all these projects and make the money stretch this year, but we prioritize those, and I'm very pleased with how many we are able to get done with each year with the funds that we have available to us.
Thank you. Any further questions from the mayor?
Mayor, not question particularly about this, but a progress report. I think all of us have gotten more complaints about one particular situation in Lafayette than anything else, and that is a railroad crossing. And I know that is probably not our responsibility, but could you, are you doing crossing the railroad?
Well, we've been talking with them for several months since they came and did the work, and the elevations are not where we would like them to be, but we have not received a response from them yet about a timetable when they would come back and fix that. So, we continue those discussions. We don't have a lot of leverage over the railroad, and even if we decided just to try to fix it all ourselves, I mean, we'd have to get permits from them and things like that. So, I prefer to continue those discussions for a while longer as opposed to us having to do that, but we'll have to wait and see. It's not progressing as fast as any of us would like. Thank you.
Any further questions of the mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any public comments or questions regarding ordinance 2015-11? Okay, seeing none with the clerk, please conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2015-11.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downey.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. And this ordinance will need to have a public hearing, so at this time, we'll entertain a motion to set the public hearing for May 4th at 7:01 PM. Mr. Campbell? Mr. Brown?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Meeting is set for 7:01 PM, May 4th, which is the next common council meeting. So, that concludes ordinances for this evening. Moving on to resolutions, first up, we have resolution 2015-04.
A resolution approving inter-local agreement, cooperation agreement between the City of Lafayette and Greater Lafayette Public Transportation Corporation.
Mrs. Williamson.
I move for passage of resolution 2015-04 on first and final reading.
Mr. Downey.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to hear ordinance 2015-04. Mrs. Leschne.
Did I say ordinance resolution? Good evening, Jenny Leschne, city engineer. Before you is an ordinance working with City Bus. As you know, our depot Myers Bridge, Reely Bridge project is under construction, and shortly, pending railroad approval, we will have to remove or take out a section of the Reely Bridge for repairs. When we do that, patrons for the Amtrak will not be able to access the platform from the depot. So, in an effort to make life a little more smoothly for those passengers and be able to access the train platform, we are working with City Bus to have a shuttle to take people from the depot to Tapewingo Drive in West Lafayette, and they would walk across the Myers Bridge to the loading platform. And this agreement allows us to work with City Bus to contract them to do that work.
Thank you. Comments or questions from council? Thank you, Mrs. Leschne. Comments or questions from members of the public regarding resolution 2015-04?
Mrs. Nargie, I move that we hear and approve resolution 2015-06. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to hear ordinance... approve resolution 2015-06. I'll get it out in a minute. Mrs. Jacobson?
Okay. This amendment moves some home funds, $100,450 from unspent funds to the Lafayette Transitional Housing Center Singles Building Rehab Project, and also $123,622 from unspent funds to unallocated rental activities. Again, we expect transitional housing to apply for those in the future, and then that activity will be... have to be approved by the Lafayette Housing Consortium. And then it also moves CDBG funds, $45,750 to the YWCA Domestic Violence Shelter Project.
Questions from council regarding this resolution? Questions or comments from members of the public regarding resolution 2015-06? Seeing none, would the clerk please conduct a roll call vote? Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero. The last resolution in the same... a resolution 2015-07?
A resolution to amend Lafayette Housing Consortium Home Program and the City of Lafayette Community Development Block Grant CDBG Action Plan for 2014.
Mr. Brown?
Madam President, I move that we hear and approve resolution 2015-07.
Mrs. Williamson?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to hear and approve resolution 2015-07. Mrs. Jacobson?
This one... this amendment moves home funds, $50,000 from unspent funds to the Lafayette Transitional Housing Center Singles Building Rehab Project, and also $50,000 from unspent funds to unallocated rental activities. And then CDBG funds, 2014 CDBG funds, it real allocates $30,000 from unspent funds to YWCA's Domestic Violence Shelter Project, and then also real allocates $24,250 from the CDBG program income to the YWCA Domestic Violence Shelter Project, and then real allocates $15,000 from CDBG program income to CDBG rental rehab activities.
Thank you. Comments or questions from council regarding this resolution? Comments or questions from members of the public over resolution 2015-07? Thank you. Seeing none, would the clerk please conduct a roll call vote? Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Jacobson. Any reports of standing committees this evening? Reports of special committees? Reports by the mayor? At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Hammack and Mr. Gibson from the Bicentennial Commission of Indiana. Is that correct? Okay, they are here to present us and the mayor with a special award. Gentlemen.
Good evening. I'm Perry Hammack, Executive Director of the Indiana Bicentennial Commission. Mayor Rosworsky, council members, distinguished guests, I bring greetings and congratulations from First Lady and official Bicentennial Ambassador Karen Pence. It's an honor for me to be here again in Lafayette to present an honor from the Bicentennial Commission. In March, the First Lady and I were here to honor the Art Smart Program at the Art Museum of Greater Lafayette. This is a wonderful program, which you're shaking your head, so you're aware of it, and great for the youth that we have here in the audience tonight. The purpose of the Bicentennial Commission is simply to be a catalyst to become... for Hoosiers to become involved in the bicentennial, which will kick off December 11th of this year and celebrate for the entire year until Statehood Day in 2016. And what better legacy can we leave for those who follow in our footsteps than a cleaner, more sustainable, healthier community in which to live, to work, and to raise a family? I applaud the mayor, the council, and the scores of volunteers who have worked so hard to make Lafayette deserving of the special recognition we will bestow this evening. The bicentennial has four major themes: nature conservation, youth and education, historical celebration, and community involvement. And all of these themes have been interwoven in the projects that you've undertaken in Lafayette to make the city a greener space and will be part of the history we're celebrating by these young gentlemen in the tercentennial, which most of us probably will not experience. Your actions today have helped conserve precious natural resources, set an example for today's children, and we should do a challenge, I think, to continue to improve on what's been created. Be proud today of your accomplishments, but keep an eye to the future and be vigilant for new ways to continue the greening of Lafayette. Again, congratulations on your accomplishments and on this honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. Mayor, board scouts, the public. It is an honor to be here. I've rather enjoyed in this meeting so far. You run a very efficient council meeting. I've never seen such unanimity. I don't know if you must work for the... in the bathroom before you come here. Anyway, and also, I applaud you for kind of open question to the public to participate as well.
Thank you.
This seems to me another example of effective local government in action. So, my name is John Gibson, and I am the state coordinator for a citizen initiative of the bicentennial approved by the Bicentennial Commission. It's called Sustainable Indiana 2016. And our mission is to go around Indiana and find the best examples that we can of cities and towns and institutional projects that are sometimes called green, sustainable, sometimes they're called climate solutions. But it all boils down to making our state more efficient and raising the quality of life for generations to come. I'm so pleased that the scouts are here tonight because I think that in many ways, when we celebrate a bicentennial, we're not just looking at the past, we're looking at how the past informs and carries into the future. But the Indiana Bicentennial Commission and our organization and all others that I know about have these young people in mind and their children and grandchildren. And we hope that the great values of our state will be carried forward for many years, another 200 perhaps. Although, we'll have to be honest, that is not assured. Nothing is all that certain in today's world. There are threats to our quality of life. But what I'm bringing you tonight is a congratulatory word because Lafayette is one of 20 pace-setting communities in Indiana in the subject of green and the quality of life that goes with it. Now, I asked them the other day why did they put the championship game so late at night? Now, they explained to me that that's because they wanted to make sure the West Coast would get in on it, but I realize now that isn't the whole answer. A better answer is, is because the Economic Council of the City of Lafayette has its meetings on Monday night. They're going to get over it before we're ready to get the game started.
I do what you got to do.
So, using that same metaphor, you know, March Madness, we have our '68 to '64 to '32, and then we have the Sweet 16 and down to the Elite Eight and the Final Four. Well, using that metaphor, I would say that this city is among the trailblazing 20. Can we use that, the trailblazing 20? What that means is that you have achieved and documented to the satisfaction of Indiana Associations of Cities and Towns called IACT. You have achieved to their satisfaction this qualification, this award called Green Communities. And we're piling on theft. We're seconding the motion. And because, as Perry said, this is an illustration of a legacy that we want to pass on. We want to be able to lift up the role models for the whole state to see and learn from. Now, we aren't suggesting you're perfect or that you're quite as resilient as you would like to be and are on the way to becoming, but we want to let you know that we recognize that you've done some remarkable things here, worthy of this honor, and that we'll look to you going forward to keep leading the way. Now, I've got a list here of 23 reasons why we are proud to give this award to you. And I know that you all know these things, but I have found in my life that sometimes just going over it again, because from any particular year or month or whatever, you're so involved in one thing or another, solving a problem or making a big decision and so on, you sometimes lose track of all that you've accomplished. So, let me just read these. I don't think you'll find it boring. As a matter of fact, I think it's sort of wonderful news. I'm going to read some of these things just to remind you of what you have done. And I presume it's not just the city. I presume that the community has participated in all this as well. A lot of departments help make these things happen. So, it's kind of for everybody. Complete street design, complete street, that's a designation now, that includes pedestrian, bicycle, and transit components. Retrofiting of traffic signals and pedestrian signals with energy-efficient LED lighting and incorporating LED city-owned light poles into road projects. Energy efficiency. By the way, it saves money, too. That's not bad. Advanced traffic management system, interconnecting the operation of traffic signals in a system to reduce vehicle idling, reducing CO2 emissions, and greenhouse gases. Expanding the trail system. Incorporating green infrastructure into green projects such as bio-retention soils, rain gardens, previous payments for... payments for stormwater management. Master plan on developer areas using low-impact development. Parks department and engineers support public-private partnerships to plant more trees. 2.1 replacement ratio for city projects, including all trees in the city street projects, maintaining a tree inventory and so on. I presume that means that you are a tree city. Would that be correct?
No.
Yes. Congratulations on that. One of our other projects is called the Tree of Hope Project. You'll be reading more about this. We're encouraging every county in the state to plant at least one tree that's kind of a memorial of the bicentennial. And for cities like this that are tree cities, it's a no-brainer because you can just pick out one. Like, a couple weeks from now, some of us will be down in Evansville. They're going to plant 200 trees, and the last one they plant's going to be the Tree of Hope. See, you can work that in if you want to. Energy efficiency retrofits of city buildings. Wastewater clean operational optimization project for energy savings. The variable frequency drive retrofits to pumps that water in wastewater in lift stations to match peak flows. Stormpark and rain garden installation at schools to promote education and awareness of the importance of clean water and the environment. 1,000 AC sewer separation project to reduce the volume of stormwater directed to and treated at the wastewater treatment plant. Extension of stormwater program to reduce sediments and pollutants. Rain valve program to the stormwater department. Occasionally incorporating environmental stewardship in... organizationally, not occasionally, organizationally incorporating environmental stewardship into our culture. Creating a master plan for our trail system, which will include bicycle pedestrian plans. Participation in the Wabash River sampling blitz for Wabash River enhancement. City-owned facilities recycling using green, clear products and efficiency lighting. North Street. Do you all know what that means? Somebody is telling me because I was going to ask before the meeting started and I forgot.
The street has been resurfaced with previous pavement so that there are no gutters on the street, is that correct?
There are gutters, but it has a...
Rain garden.
It has a special modular combination of stones underneath that allow the stormwater to permeate down through the surface. So, we dumped 2,000 gallons of water on it at one time with a fire truck, and it absorbed that water before any of the water actually made it to a new level.
I don't want to get to preaching here, but let me just say, I'm a retired minister, by the way. Do not ever underestimate the importance of water management. You know what's happening in California? The predictions are that we're all going to be having to pay a lot more attention to what we've taken for granted all our lives, and that is the conservation of water. And so, projects like this are really golden. And the Community Bank Block, I don't know exactly what that is, but apparently that's another street in the... or area in there in the city? Okay. And the Burkey's Run Sewer Separation Project, and the Vinton Rain Gardens, and the VMP Bio Swales. That just adds up, you know, over time. The IACT has been giving these awards for seven years now. And they don't just pass these things out like shuffling a deck of cards. I mean, you have to do a lot of work to document. I don't know who among you were participating in that documentation, but it's pretty extensive. And then you're in competition for others that are in the same size community as you are. To get this award is a true feather in your cap. So, let's cut this short now so that we'll be sure to get it.
They must remember why you did that, Mom. They've got to know.
Here's what we're giving to the city. It's a simple little award. It's got the bicentennial logo here. It's got our organization's logo. It just says, "An Indiana Bicentennial Community Legacy Community." And the mayor would receive this on behalf of the city.
I'd be humbled and honored to be.
Thank you.
Well, I would just briefly say that I humbly accept this award on behalf of the city council and all the citizens of Lafayette who take sustainability, protecting our natural resources, being good stewards of those gifts that we have been given to make sure that we preserve them for generations to come. We do have a very extensive program where people work... do a lot of different things and a lot of documentations, but with most things that are good. It takes a lot of people working together with the same commitment, moving in the same direction, to make that happen. So, I respectfully accept this on behalf of the city council and all the citizens of Lafayette that make this such a wonderful place.
Thank you. Mr. Hammack, Mr. Gibson, thank you so much for joining us tonight, and we are very appreciative of the honor. And I would also like to thank all of the very... many, very hard-working city workers that work every day to make this award possible. So, thanks to them as well. Moving on to reports of councilmen. Mr. Campbell?
There has been some problems with discrimination or something, I guess, that's been in newspapers and on recent topics. But at any rate, I didn't feel as an individual that we would present a resolution one way or the other, other than to have a letter composed by the city attorney and the city clerk to ask that the legislature not... or whoever's there, not take away our ordinance, which is an anti-discriminatory ordinance. And that was the summons substance of it. The members here can sign it if they wish or not sign it. And then if you would advance that, if that's appropriate, advance it to the people at the State House, that that would be the summons substance of what we're asking to do, that only that our ordinance for anti-discrimination be left alone. And that's it. That's my case.
Any further comments from council about this letter?
Well, I for one am glad that we decided to at least come up with a letter like this because I've spent 16 years on this council. I've spent 16 years on this council, and we have worked very, very hard to make this a... a community that is welcoming to our citizens, that is livable, that is welcoming to business. And it kind of rubs me the wrong way that the folks in the state legislature would kind of wipe away our ability to assure that to our citizens based on a problem that I... as far as I can tell, have never seen come up. I think we do need to address this because, as I said, we work way too hard to attract good businesses. to attract good businesses, good-paying jobs, and good citizens to this community. To have the waters muddied over issues that don't really apply here. So, I'll be signing.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Campbell, would you like me to share the letter with the audience?
Sure.
If you can hear that. Okay.
Maybe ask the authors because they may have some residual coming into this.
Just so that the public is aware of what is being composed here. This letter is addressed to Governor Pence, Senate President Pro Tim Wong, and Speaker Bosma. The undersigned members of the common council in the City of Lafayette are sending this letter in opposition to the passage of Senate Road Act 101, also known as the Religious Freedom Restoration Act, or RFRA. The City of Lafayette is committed to protect the rights of all citizens, regardless of sexual orientation, race, ethnicity, religion, or creed, and has had in place for over 20 years a Human Relations Ordinance to provide such protection. The City of Lafayette's Human Relations Ordinance was enacted to provide all of citizens equal opportunity and to end discrimination and to encourage and promote mutual respect and understanding of each other by all groups, and to promote and guarantee equal rights to all citizens. Local and national businesses, organizations, and faith groups, large and small, and residents of the City of Lafayette oppose RFRA as it makes Indiana less welcoming and less competitive in recruiting and retaining talented employees. We have grave concern that the recent passage of RFRA is not a true representation of our city as a welcoming and inclusive place and is bad for local businesses. It will reduce tourism revenue and make companies less competitive in recruiting and retaining top talent. The undersigned encouraged the Indiana State Legislature to specifically exempt all civil rights laws, including but not limited to locally enacted human rights ordinances from the RFRA. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any further comments about this letter from members of council? Any further reports of councilmen? Okay. At this time, we will open the floor to public comments. I would remind you, should you want to make a public comment, to approach the microphone, state your name and address, and that your remarks are limited to three minutes.
Hello, I'm Joseph Casper. I live across the river in 917 Robinson Street. And the gentleman from the state had a very good segue for this. The first thing that they recognized you for was adopting a complete streets plan as well as including bicycles and pedestrians in your planning. So, a large part of what I want to do right now is thank you for the support you've had along with the mayor and the city engineer of a bicycle and pedestrian master plan on behalf of Bicycle Lafayette. The last time I was in the council chambers was part of that review, and the last time I was at a meeting was for the three-foot passing ordinance. Thank you again for making it a safer place for bicycles. As we go forward and hash out a true master plan for bicycle and pedestrian, I just want to recognize that supporting bicycles supports equality, local business, personal health, and so many other things. So, I look forward to a plan that supports the growth into the future of Lafayette for bicycles and pedestrians. I also want to recognize that next month is Bicycle Month. I know the mayor has been involved in the past, and all of you are encouraged to join in to what people in the community are doing on bicycles. You can check BicycleLafayette.org for that. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. Any further comment from members of the public? Mr. Campbell.
Madam President, I move to hear.
Mr. Brown.
I have to go back to the...
Was it favor? Thank you. We are adjourned.